...is 7:07. Sorry, the governor was here. We had to private meeting with him, so I apologize for being late. Invocation moment of silence, Mr. Grady.
They say it's spring, but you can't tell by the weather. But what spring brings is new beginnings, new life. Please take a moment, take a breath of fresh air, enjoy the new sounds of the birds chirping, enjoy the sights of the plants coming back to life. Just take a moment and enjoy life. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Okay, in the event of a fire or another emergency, we have exits to the rear of the chambers and also down to my left and out to the parking lot. Mrs. Zolucki, could I have roll call, please?
Mr. Grady?
Here.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Here.
Mr. Neville?
Here.
Mrs. Thurston?
Here.
Mr. Genitis?
Here.
Mr. Peabody?
Present.
Mrs. Ungeyer? Mr. Warwar? Chairman Serrard?
Present. Tonight, we have a very special guest, Mr. Joe Ravelise. Since I don't have a microphone, please forgive me while I read this. We're going to have Joe come up shortly. Proclamation recognizing Joe Ravelise, distinguished friend of education award recipient. Whereas Joseph Ravelise has been honored with the Distinguished Friends of Education Award for his exemplary service as a principal supporter of the Transitional Learning Academy since its inception over 10 years ago, and whereas this program provides vocational and extended learning experiences for students with significant developmental disabilities, and whereas during his involvement with the program, Joseph has employed countless ETLS students at his restaurant, The Country Diner, providing each with safe, structured, and supportive work environment, and whereas the Transitional Learning Academy empowers these students with essential skills that will allow them to be successful and contributing members of society, and whereas at his own personal expense, Joseph caters an annual graduation luncheon for academy staff, students, and their families, and whereas Joseph presents each graduate with a personalized plaque, which is another example of how his generosity and kindness has served as a model to inspire other community businesses to reach out and support our local school programs. Now therefore, Scott Copan, mayor of the town of Enfield, on behalf of the town council, the town administration, and the entire community do hereby recognize Joseph Ravelise for his support of the Transitional Learning Academy and honor him on behalf of many students and residents that he has inspired over the years. Signed, Scott Copan, Mayor. Joe, the mayor could not be here today. He expressed his regrets because he did really wish to be here. And I'm going to ask you to come up. We have some things to give you. On behalf of the Board of Education, we recognize Joseph Ravelise in appreciation for your commitment, dedication, and generous contributions to the student segment. Joe, thank you so much. Your Enfield ends best. Thank you.
Thank everybody very much for the presentation, the Board of Education, and all you folks who came out tonight. At least we're not dodging the snow that Cape Cod is. 20 years ago, when I came to Enfield to be a police officer, I was going to do 20 years and get out. I wanted to be in Florida, where it was nice and warm, but something drastic happened. I fell in love with the town of Enfield. I opened The Country Diner, and that's where I stayed. And we get involved with these different programs. Wonderful children, wonderful folks. And again, I thank you very much. This is a very humbling experience, and it's something I take with a lot of honor. Thank you.
Mr. Paulman?
Would it be all right if I have a couple of my friends here come up and tell you a little bit about why Joe's important to them?
Very good.
Guys, want to come up? Kelly and Dylan, come on up.
Well, I think if the... they can either use the hand mic or the mic right in front there.
Okay. All right. So let's lay where we planned. I'm going to give this to you, sweetie. And you can just lean forward, and you can go first. All right?
Joe, doing special favors in a dozen different ways, looking out for others with no thought of thanks or praise, treating people like a family. Someone we look up to because he is honest, friendly, welcoming, caring, and helpful.
All right. Nicely done. And Dylan, why don't you tell them a little bit about what you think about Joe, okay?
Okay. He has a beautiful heart. He cares about kids and other people. He loves other people, and he's a wonderful guy.
All right. Good job, buddy. And I definitely want to thank the Board for taking the time to recognize Joe tonight. He truly is a champion of our students, and Enfield is a much better place, and Enfield schools are a much better place having Joe Ravelise on our side. So thank you all very much.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, in addition to the Board's gratitude for Mr. Ravelise, the community would also like to recognize the Board this evening. Our students at various schools have prepared some things for you in recognition of the hard work that you do, and we have some of our administrators here with them to... I don't know if you have anything prepared or if you're just here in support. Okay? So we have Mrs. Collins and Ms. Brown from JFK, and Ms. Krieger from the Enfield High School, and Mr. Newton as well. I'm not sure if I see anybody else. And they're here to talk to you a little bit about what's in front of you. Okay, and Ms. Cox Blackwell in the back. Sorry, I couldn't see that far. And Mrs. Engels is back there. There's an awful lot of people here. It's hard to pick everyone out. Thank you for raising your hand. But in front of you, I'll just read through the list, and they'll have them come up and do their thing. You have something from Henry Barnard. There's posters signed by the students and staff. Prudence Crandall has a banner signed by the students and staff. Enfield High has cards and letters from the students. Nathan Hale has sent letters and cards from the students. Hazard Memorial has sent a plant and signed letters from the students. And Parkman School has sent a banner signed by the students and the staff. Whitney has signed a banner by the student and staff. JFK has student presentations, and they'll be up just in a few minutes. And Enfield High School has sent the gift of the plants in front of you. So I think we'll start with... Oh, and Head Start is over on the far wall. They came through here and they didn't make my list. So who would like to start? Should we start with the middle school? Okay. Why don't you guys come up and...
We're going to do what we do best. We're going to do what we do best and let the kids do the work for us because they've worked very hard to do this presentation.
Hi. Hi, my name is Maggie McPhee, and I'm a sixth grader on the Sycor.
And I am Andrew Barnes. I am an eighth grader on the Gaskell team.
This is the first year that we have volleyball club here at JFK.
Our two coaches were Coach Fix and Coach Fitzgerald.
We had a lot... we had a total of 35 students participate in the volleyball club.
We learned the rules of volleyball and the basic skills. Rotation, setting, overhead passing, forearm passing, serving, scoring, and scrimmaging.
The volleyball club met every Monday and Wednesday during the fall.
It was a great way to meet new friends and learn how to play volleyball.
We were so... we were all so happy that an activity like volleyball started at JFK, and we hope that it continues because it was a lot of fun.
Hi, I am Imani Davis, and I am one of the seventh grade co-Vice Presidents for Rachel's Challenge.
And I am Sean Donahue, and I am the eighth grade president for Rachel's Challenge. This has been another exciting year for us, where we have had acts of kindness, not only at JFK, but in the community as well.
We have done many great things this year. For example, raising money for cancer awareness, ride for Nico, and the Turkey Trot.
We also spoke at the Reefs Across America and volunteered at the Pancake Breakfast in December.
We also volunteered at the Heritage Fair and were the true regards for our two fifth grade open houses.
We are looking forward to the Kindness Carnival at the end of the school year.
I'm Victoria Richards.
And I'm Diamond Daniels, and we are both on the mayor team.
We are part of the Club of Community Service Club, but now called JFK Cares Club.
In this club, we have been involved in helping out our community. This year, we have done the following. We sold Doc Stray's money for two homeless veterans here in Enfield, baked cookies for the camouflage campaign, and made centerpieces for Valentine's... for the Valentine dinner at the Parkway Nursing Home on Enfield Street.
And sold more ducks to purchase nice titchu boxes for the Parkway, which we are now decorating and adding string messages and wishes. We have also been writing cards for the soldiers who have deployed around the world and become home... home cards for these who have returned.
You will find some items that are very special to us at JFK. The first item is something students get once a month if they are nominated. The second is an item that all new staff get when they become part of our JFK family, and we would like to extend that to all of you because we are all a team. Lastly, an item that was made by our 3D Printer Club. Thank you again.
Thank you, guys. They tell our story best. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman, we thank our students for coming forward and presenting the gifts as well as their thoughtful words, and for our administrators tonight for coming out in support of the Board, and certainly for the entire student body of many of our schools who have recognized the dedication that you all give to our community. So we thank you. And we also are going to hear next from our students from the high school as part of their bi-weekly reports.
So on behalf of all of Fermi and Enfield High, Christine and I would like to thank you, thank the Board of Ed, for all of your hard work and dedication that you put towards making our school systems the best they can be. As a token of our appreciation, in front of you, Mr. Newton and Ms. Krieger got together to present you with these, the flowers. And along with the flowers, you see Beanie Baby Eagles inside of them. And they represent our coming together into our new high school and as our Enfield Eagles. So, onto practical matters. A couple of weeks ago, Fermi's Talent Show took place on the 14th and the 15th, and it was fantastic as always, as was junior prom last Friday on the 21st. Spring sports just started yesterday, and we're looking forward to a great season. And next Tuesday, on the 1st, will be our sports information night at 6:30 in the auditorium. And finally, Fermi Lamp Lighters' last show of the year will take place on April 11th and 12th at 12... or, one thing, at 7:00 PM in the auditorium.
Adding on to what Katie said, we just wanted to show our appreciation and how much we really do appreciate all the work that you put in to help bettering our schools, and we look forward to all the progress we'll make. At our Enfield High, it's been busy, and it's going to continue being busy. Last Saturday, on the 22nd, we hosted the Invention Convention, which I did not get to attend as I was in Illinois, but I heard wonderful things about it, and that it was a very fun day for everyone. This Friday, AHS will have our junior prom at the Holiday Inn, and the 28th will also be the first day of the Women's Club Art Festival. That will also be on the 29th, and it's in our cafeteria. It's for all the grades and all the elementary schools, as well as the high school students, and it's free admission. Our CAP Scholar Breakfast has been moved to April 4th due to the testing, and that is going to be a fun day because we did so well this year on the CAP. Thursday, April 10th, the junior students will be participating in a post-secondary planning program that will be held in the auditorium beginning at 7:15, and the parents are welcome to come to this if they wish. That's all.
Dr. Schuman? Couple other items. You've heard about the Women's Art Club Festival. The kindergarten registration week begins the week of April 7th at all the primary schools: Barnard, Enfield Street, Hazerville Memorial, and Nathan Hale. So we should start to get acquainted with our next wave of kindergarteners coming in. Spring vacation is set to begin on April 14th, and we're assured it will be spring by then. And you also have the grants updated and the personnel report in your package this evening.
Audiences, do we have any answers tonight? Thank you, Mr. Grady. Thank you, Ms. Carlander. Board member comments, Mr. Grady?
Well, first, I want to thank everybody for all the banners and everything, and especially Parkman School from my gift from them, and they rock. You know, I'm just... I'm not saying the other schools don't, but Parkman rocks. I'm sorry. But thank you very much. It's... this is part of the job that we really like. I mean, we hate the budget time. We hate making decisions that affect people's lives. They're tough decisions, but when we have something like this, or we go to the Invention Convention, or we go to the CAP breakfasts and all that stuff and see how well our students do, that's a good part of the job. And I just wanted to say thank you from the bottom of my heart, you know, for everything you guys did for us tonight. I also want to say something about Joe Ravelise. I know he's done a lot for the schools here in Enfield, but Joe is a guy you could say is the epitome of a guy with a heart of gold. It's not just for the school system, it's for anybody in this town. If you have a problem or you need a fundraiser, Joe is the first one to volunteer his business and do what he has to do to raise money for anybody here in town. And I just want to thank Joe Ravelise from all of us, I believe, and from our town to Joe. He's just an awesome guy. And I was able to attend the Invention Convention. We got some smart kids in this school system. It was really nice to see the part of this theme program that is starting to develop, and some of these ideas that these kids came up was just awesome. I don't know who was able to attend. There's different people I saw during the day, and my hat is off to all those kids that did what they did and their ideas that they came up with, and it's just amazing the stuff that we have in this town. And I'm looking forward to next weekend with the Arts Festival because, let me tell you, I've been to those, and they are some talented, gifted kids in this town, and I'm just looking forward to seeing that. But that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Grady. Ms. LeBlanc?
Okay. I will start with... last year, I think, was the first time the schools came to us, you know, saying thank you and how much they appreciated all our hard work. And to me, it was just humbling because the appreciation... you don't really ever have to thank me because I just appreciate seeing the kids happy and the teachers happy, and things like the Invention Convention and the Arts Festival and different accomplishments make me know that everybody's doing their job right. And this is just so humbling for me because it's just touching. It's just... it's what we do. It's what we spend our time doing, and we don't even really think about it because we want to work hard for you guys, and we know you guys work hard for us in school. And just seeing what you guys can do is just amazing. Can I address Mrs. Carlander at this point? Ms. Carlander, I got an email from another parent regarding their student that didn't get into the VOEG program as well. She actually thought it had to do with budget constraints, but it has to do with the spaces. So I will look more into that for you. And I hope that everybody has a nice spring vacation coming up. And I guess I'm kind of taken back with all the... again, it was really nice that the schools went out of their way to do this for us. It was very nice.
I think you're going to hear a lot of ditto's along here as we go along the line here. First of all, I'd like to thank all the students as well. You're the reason we do this. We should be thanking you. But it's nice to see you come up here. It's certainly nice to be recognized here. None of us expect it. I think last year was the first year that happened, and I think we're all a bit overwhelmed and humbled. I think that's the correct word. It was nice to see the JFK folks come up here and kind of symbolize some of the good things that you do that we've been able to support, like Rachel's Challenge, like JFK Cares, like JFK Volleyballs. And I'm sure every one of the schools could do that. We're proud of what you've been able to do with that, and we're proud of you. And we just want... I just want to thank you personally, and you don't know how much we all appreciate it. And it also speaks well of your character, and that's what we're trying to build here. So thank you very much. Secondly, Joe Ravelise is, you know, is a fixture around here for the things that he does and the things... the attention that he doesn't want. I'm amazed that you got him here to accept the award because he absolutely never wants to do it. I've been to a number of the graduations, and he puts on quite a show for these kids, and wonderful spread. He doesn't want anything. He just does it because he thinks it's the right thing to do, and he truly loves Enfield. So I'm thrilled that he was recognized down at the Aqua Turf, what, a couple of weeks ago, and that we were able to recognize him here, both in the town side and from the Board side. We have wonderful people in this town, and we have wonderful kids in this town, and we have to recognize that. We don't talk enough about that, and I think it's good to see that here. So I have a couple of other things that I'll bring up on the budget at... when we get... we'll have time to talk at the... on the item workshops, right?
I believe so, yes.
I'll bring it up at that time. Thank you all very much.
Ms. Thurston?
Can I just, like everybody else, I want to... this is loud. Thank you for everything you guys did for us tonight. Eli, Whitney, and Head Start, you guys rock. Mrs. Collins, I want to... the kids that came up, I used to work at Parkway Pavilion, and I've seen what those kids have done in the past. And let me tell you, they bring smiles to the residents' faces. They look forward to their senior proms, Valentine's Day dance, all of those. I mean, just having the children walk through the door. So I am so excited to see that continue, and I hope it goes on for a very long time. That's it.
Mr. Genitis?
Now you got to sing.
Only if you can say my name. First of all, I want to say, "Go UConn, men and women." Be nice to have dual championships. Joe, a personal shout-out to Joe for everything that he has done, and I think he left early because he wanted to invite anybody that was still here at the end of the meeting for free breakfast tomorrow. I hope Joe is watching. Thank you to the schools and the kids who made up the cards, and especially the flowers. I used to have a pair of pants that were like this, that don't fit anymore, but it's nice. And I'm claiming those too if they don't show up. But this is very nice of you. It really is. So thank you. Some of us, I think four of us were at a meeting before this where we met with the governor, and I just want to let everybody know that we did bring up Common Core and the evaluation system, and it was brought up. Why don't we just leave it at that? At JFK, on March 12th, they had over 300 students and parents show up. It's the time of the year where we used to bring in the sixth graders to meld them into the JFK, but now it's the fifth graders. So they started the orientation process. About 300 showed up, and they got to attend some classes, meet some teachers, basically learn what life is going to be like at JFK when they enter next year as a sixth grader, and what the experience will be like. Later on in the year, for those who didn't make it, and really for all of them, they'll get to attend a half a day at JFK, where they'll spend the day matching up with, shadowing a student, and go to classes, eat lunch there, and get a feel for what it's like in the building. It's a good transition program for the kids coming in. I just remember seeing how the sixth graders were. I just can't imagine what the fifth graders are like. And two other things. Thinking about last night... no, I'll ask that. Not in public. That's it. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Peabody?
I'm not going to tear it apart. Thank you. Appreciate the flowers and the well wishes. As I said last night at the town council, I mean, it's my 11th week on the Board, and I get flowers. Can't beat that, man. Can't beat it. And I'm not in trouble, so I'm not going to give them to my wife either. They're mine. A couple of things that I'd like to express. One, Joe Ravelise, I mean, I can't do names tonight.
R, Joe R.
Joe R. Tremendous man, and he reflects the spirit of this town that goes back to the people who made this town a community. I often refer to him as the Greatest Generation, like Tom Brokaw does. And he fits right in that mold, cares passionately about our town, and not only says he's going to do stuff, he does stuff. He did this stuff for my Boy Scouts. He did stuff for lots of folks. He helps make us a community, and I very much appreciate his efforts. Couple of... one of the committees that I'm on is the Curriculum Committee. I did attend my first meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I came away very impressed. As a lot of the Board members know, and Dr. Schuman know, the curriculum team was not my favorite group of people. I didn't understand them, and now I do. I have a very, very good appreciation of Ms. McKeonin, that I could... I have a very, very good appreciation of Ms. McKeonan, did I get that right? Okay, thank you. She's integrating, working to integrate area businesses into our school system. That's critical. Where I was before that happened, we're talking about the IBMs and the Bell and Howells and Xeroxes of the world, Glaxo Welcome, all coming into our school systems and injecting themselves through various programs. I think that's great and she's targeting with our vocational program and I just, that's a great response to requests that they had to get involved and they're getting involved. The other thing I want to mention, I mentioned it last night, that they're working to actually save us some money and increase their own stake in the game by producing textbooks on their own without having to go at Curly's expenses. In a world of tight budgets, that's a tremendous effort. The other thing is that I did two weeks ago, I went down to the state legislature and testified before the committee, Education Committee on Common Core. I won't go through all the details, but I'll tell you, I did, it was probably not the best way to spend a vacation day. Some of the stuff that was going on, it's, I don't want to get into the politics of it, I want to stay in the money of it, but I cannot believe the disparity between towns that with means and towns that don't have so much means and who's having the struggles in implementing Common Core and that's all I'll say to that. I had one request, Mr. Chairman, from a couple of parents and that is to revisit the 214, 215 schedule to align Enfield with some of the area towns. We have some families and events and things that kids do that I know I took my children out of high school to do, sorry, Mr. Newton, like soccer and other tournaments and things like that. So I think it's worth revisiting and trying to align with some of the other towns where kids can participate in other activities outside of our schools. That's it. Oh, one more thing. I did see these keychains being made and that's pretty cool. 3D printers, I've heard about them, but I never saw one and I was at the Heritage Fair. I was actually watching them make these keychains, which I will be using. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peabody. Okay. Ms. Ungeyer expresses her regrets. She is away on business, she cannot be here. Sorry for being here late, we did meet with the governor. We did have a brief conversation with the governor about the Common Core and the Teachers' Evaluation System. It looked like we were going to be discussing it with them at another date in the future. So that, I'm grateful for that small token. I wish to say thank you to all of our students and all of our administrators. You're the guys that, like Mr. Neville has said, deserve the thanks. The recognition for what we do here is, it always humbles me and I'm always amazed. And I really do like the Eagles, so it's very cool. Mr. Ravelise, I'm going to say, I can't speak highly enough of the man. He's a very, very big asset to the town of Enfield and, as I said, is Enfield at its best. Today, I attended a CAPE meeting of the Board of Ed Chairs of the region and I can tell you, it was a very fun experience and a very enlightening experience. It seems that all of the challenges that the individual school districts face across the state, Enfield faces all of them. So it was, we, I've been there, felt most of their pain, understood where they were coming from. We also, we're going to be discussing it in the, coming up with the next line item. So withhold comment about the Fermi Reuse Committee, which we had our first meeting. And it was actually a positive meeting. So with that being said, I have one question for Mr. Peabody. What, yes, and it's very simple regarding the CAPE, or not, regarding the rescheduling. What are you looking to do?
The parents are looking to align it with the towns around us such as Suffield. Families do things, that's the request. They want to be able to link up their children's activities during that April vacation in 2015. That was the request I got.
So they're looking to amend the April vacation in 2015 to bring it in line with other district schools?
Correct.
Or other schools within our
Yep.
realm, okay.
Thank you.
I wasn't curious, I was curious as to what you say because if you were asking us to play with graduation dates, we can't do that, so.
Only to move them up.
It's all good. Unfinished business. Continue the discussion regarding the use of the Enrico Fermi Building.
As a point of information, I'm wondering whether we can move up Item 12, it's a report on the Advisory Committee, how that went before we go into this because they may have covered some of the same things that we'd be bringing up. Just a question.
Well, what I can tell you is that I can, we have minutes to this, to what was done. Our basic assignments were assigned. That, I mean, we can bring that underneath the board committee reports. This is more of an opportunity for the board to have a discussion of their feelings or opinions on the reuse of the Fermi Building. Or if you have no motions or discussions on it, then we can move forward.
I don't have anything at this point.
All right, we move forward. New business, approval of fiscal year 2015 Head Start Federal COLA Grant and Sequestration Restoration Funds.
Chairman Ms. Clement is here to talk to you about this a little bit and we're just looking for permission for Head Start to go ahead and apply for the restoration grant.
Hello. Whenever you have to vote on one of our grants, we always like to come before you and give you an update of how our program is doing. Again, I'm Debbie Clement, the director. This is Kelly Bowles, our Family Support Coordinator, and I want to echo all of the sentiments that have been put forward tonight and thank you for your time and effort for the Enfield Public School System. And now I'd like Kelly to give you an update on our family involvement.
Our families have been very busy at Head Start this spring. We hosted our first STEAM festival about a week and a half ago and the parents planned the whole thing. They had age-appropriate activities and the children were able to learn about STEAM from the grassroots. They had a wonderful time. I'm very proud of our parents for putting it together. They enjoyed the engagement with their children and with each other. We also are hosting a Fire Prevention Family Night tomorrow night with the Enfield Fire Department at Head Start. We have about 82 people signed up to attend and we're really looking forward to that, working with Don Ellis. We just, we're just very pleased with the engagement going on at our school this year. It seems that every year, it gets stronger and stronger and the parents, it's very important to the parents to make sure that the children are learning things at their level so that they can move on to kindergarten successfully.
Okay, I did send you the budget for the two grants that we're applying, that we're asking for approval for and it is the Sequestration Restoration Funds and that's just the restoration of the funds that was cut last year. So that will be used to restore non-certified staff's hours, days that have been cut. And also the COLA will be used towards the staff's increases this year. Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve the fiscal year 2015 Head Start Federal COLA Grant and Sequestration Restoration Funds?
So move.
So move, second.
Open for discussion? No discussion?
We need a roll call on that?
Yes. Mr. Grady?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Ms. Thurston? Mr. Genitis? Mr. Peabody?
Yes.
Chairman Serrart?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the good work you do. We appreciate it, we really do.
Thank you.
Item B, would that be best left to after executive session or can we?
It's the board's choice. I don't believe there'll be much need for executive session on this as I think many of the board members are familiar with the unfortunate and sad task that we have in front of us.
Okay, so receipt in action upon recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools concerning teachers' contract non-renewals in accordance with Connecticut General Statute, Section 10-151.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you have said repeatedly and many of the board members have echoed, the timeline of the budget development process is such that we have to, we get ourselves in a position where we have to make a lot of decisions before we know about the final outcome. In other words, we have to operate first as a board, before the town, before the state. As such, the board needs to take steps so that it could reduce its overall expenditures, especially in the areas of salaries. With regards to non-tenured teachers, the board has the opportunity to non-renew teachers prior to a certain date and that would be now. So sadly, I will recommend to you that the Board of Education make the motion on the memo that you received to non-renew the stated certified contracts and that the Board of Education then approve that motion and grant me the permission to contact these teachers and inform them that we are not able to renew their contracts at this time.
Secretary Grady?
I moved that the contract of employment of Anthony Alagro, Lauren Andrews, William Barrett, Jesse Bartram, Adam Billing, Stephanie Karan, Brian Davis, Kristen Demming, Jacqueline Denapoli, Amy Dellus, Tara DeSeplo, Lindsay Eslinger, Kristen Fitzsimmons, Stephen Fix, Deborah Gaskill, Stephen Gorak, Mackenzie Griffin, Erin Hayes, Stacy Hicks, Lisa Hunter, Alyssa Ivanoff, Jane Cars, Catherine Goodlack, Adam Mitchell, Kim Mulligan, Matthew Murray, Daniel Paradise, Amber Basco, Nicole Ricky, Jacqueline Sean, Leah Scardardo, Jennifer Scully, Joel Sines, Samantha Sergrew, Justin Talarra, Kelly Turjon, John Ungeyer, Heather Vaughan, William Walpole, Brianna Wilson, Laura Wisniewski, Nicole Wright. Not be renewed for the following year upon its expiration at the end of the 2013-2014 school year and that the Superintendent of Schools be directed to advise such persons in writing of this action.
Second reluctantly.
Any discussion? Mr. Peabody?
Do we have a figure of what those salaries, the impact of the budget would be? Is that something we can discuss here or do we have to do it elsewhere?
Multiplied by 55,000 roughly.
Fifteen, thirty.
Just forty.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, forty-two times probably 25,000. What's that? Fifty thousand. Approximately $1 million.
What's our history of callbacks?
It depends. It really, it depends on what the ultimate dollar amount is that's awarded to us by the council. I think it's more than a million bucks. What are we using for a figure, 25?
I'm using 25,000 because all these individuals will be eligible for unemployment. So their contracts are around 40,000, they'll probably be eligible for unemployment.
Okay. And it really depends on what that number is. If we were to look at the cuts that were proposed by the town manager, we'd be losing all of them. Okay? And because we really, you know, as we said last night, there's not a lot of place to go other than staff and we'll be looking for the superintendent to give us some idea of changes in class size if something that drastic were to happen.
Thank you. Mr. Genitis?
I understand the reason why this is being done and all new teachers have to go through this, but in light of this ongoing budget process and the fact that it's backwards, unless there's a teacher on this list who has not had the greatest evaluations, I would say I'm going to vote for not dismissing them and I do that because I would rather see these people stay and keep class sizes where they are, which would then force us to make harder decisions somewhere else.
Mr. Neville?
The process here is more of a technicality for the board and it helps protect the board from financial burden if we don't do it. I mean, the hope is that we'll bring these folks back and in past years, we've been able to bring back a number of them and I think the superintendent will be coming to us and asking us at some point, if we get a better idea of the budget, to bring back people who are very, very, they're in shortage areas. Probably math and science and specialty ed and those kind of areas because they're very, very difficult to hire. And I think he'll also be looking for us to bring them back as soon as we can because we don't want to lose the good teachers that we have to another district. And they need some predictability in their life. So I, although I hear what my colleague, Mr. Genius, is saying, I've done this a lot of years and I don't know how you find that much money in anything and still maintain the mandates and legalities of carrying out the board's legal responsibilities. I just don't see it. And we can debate this as we go along, but I guess we'll respectfully agree to disagree.
Any other comments? I, I'm going to piggyback with Mr. Neville's comments on, this is a unfortunate technicality that we do have to go through this process every year, that every year we do have to read a list of names. It is, historically speaking, these names, they don't lose their positions, historically speaking. It is, again, entirely dependent on the end funding level that we get and I am fairly confident that it's, we'll meet somewhere between what we've asked for and what the town manager has suggested. I don't like closing options down prior to any decision being made. You need as many options on the table, no matter how painful some of those options are. And I think we all know that when it comes to future negotiations with regards to the budget and making the tougher decisions with regards to the budget, I'm in concordance with Mr. Genitis in the sense that I would rather have boots on the ground than other things. But at the same time, we do have an obligation as state officials to obey the law. And the law says that we have to read these names to keep that option open. And if you close the door now, we may be in jeopardy in other areas. Because of the matters concerned, I don't think I would belabor it any further. So, any other discussion, Mr. Peabody?
What, what I have a problem with is what else, you made a comment about the law, you made a comment about that. One of the things I learned when I was down in there, Mr. Chairman, is the state has no authority to, that's what a lawyer was talking about and everybody on that education committee agreed, the state doesn't have authority to do anything, they have no teeth other than money when it comes to education. That's their authority. So frankly, me being me, I would sit there and tell the state to do something, quite unpleasant, because they're killing us. They, as I stated many times, 2.9 mil is all unfunded mandates. Our budget increases 1.9 mil, do the math. And I know we can't say we got a budget reduction. So I have a hard time with that personally, I'm not debating. I'm just telling you what I'm thinking.
Mr. Genitis?
You're talking about having these names read and that we have to do this?
Yeah.
Okay. We have to do this primarily to protect ourselves from the unemployment side of aspects. So if you don't give them a letter by a certain date, then they're entitled to collect their unemployment. They could go off, find another job, we could offer somebody, I don't even know what these people teach, but identifying the ones very quickly that are in areas of shortage, I think we should do that right away. And then, as I said, that's why I left the window open. If there are a couple in here who just haven't had good evaluations, fine. For the overwhelming majority, I'm saying, and I'm still going to say that, I think if we vote not to do this, then it's forcing us to do something else. I mean, the choices aren't going to be good no matter which way we go, but I think this is a commitment to say that we as a board are going to keep class sizes down.
Well, the problem that I see and when it comes to the end result of what we could do if we defy the state, they do owe, they do own our purse strings and they owe a significant portion of our budget and their threat of removing that funding would put us all in jeopardy. We would end up basically having to come up with twice the same amount of money that we are currently requesting from the town, minus our educational cost sharing grants and all the other grants that the state could withhold from us. So instead of getting a 64, 65 million dollar budget So instead of getting a sixty-four, sixty-five million dollar budget with a good portion of that funded by the state as they're required to do, they could punish us by not sending that money or a portion of that money, and then we are back to the town saying, we need 20 million or X amount of dollars to finish the year off. And if we can't come up where the town decides that they don't want to do that, or they, we don't have the, then we're in trouble. So again, this is why we read these, because it's part of the process, and it's an unfortunate part of the process, but it leaves options on the table so that we maintain our school system. I mean, I personally have entertained, you know, there are ideas that are out there, and I've listened to some of them, and I've entertained some of them, that, you know, would wean us off of the dependency on the state. But to have it done on a vote that is a preemptive action that allows us to have an option that we may not execute, I don't understand that thinking. Any further discussion? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Grady?
No.
This is LeBlanc.
Yes.
Mr. Neville?
Yes.
Mrs. Thurston?
Yes.
Mr. Genitis?
No.
Mr. Peabody?
No.
Chairman Surratt?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item, budget workshops. Dr. Schuman?
Mr. Chairman, this item was placed on the agenda as a request of a Board member?
It was requested by Mr. Waller and Mr. Peabody to add some additional budget workshops to the Board of Education roster. Mr. Neville, you have a comment?
I've requested for three weeks, so I think it's bipartisan, the request.
Bipartisan, I'm sorry, I forgot you, Mr. Neville.
How could you forget me?
So I believe we should open up the floor to discussion and come up with some dates for further budget workshops.
I think we've been talking throughout the budget process that we were going to look for efficiencies and that we can't, we could not do the discussion in the thorough manner that we wanted to prior to the February 25th date or whatever it was. And so what we wanted to do was spend some time after this, after we gave that number, and to look for as many efficiencies and explore as many ideas that had come up during that budget discussion. So I would like to set, you know, half a dozen meetings, not the fact that we have to meet all half a dozen times, but it's much easier to cancel a meeting than it is to set it up, particularly as we get into the spring semester. So I just, you know, get your calendars out, I'd like to do that, a couple of hours. My preference would be to do it over at the boardroom, I think that's conducive to it. If people want to do it another place, that's fine, but so that we can hash out the ideas that we've been talking about, and I think we all have a number of things we'd like to bring to the table to discuss.
Mr. Peabody?
How can you forget, Mr. Neville? I don't understand that.
Can't understand it either.
It's like, gosh, you know? You've got to answer that one.
It was a faux pas.
We, we made a commitment as a Board to work through the budgets, to not, to keep the current state of the school system viable. The budget process, as far as I'm concerned, is bass ackwards, and we need to go through, yeah, I said it, and we need to go through and we need to get through this year and we need to continue. Because I don't want to come to another situation next year without understanding my total requirements from the state that they don't give us any money for, all the grants that we get, which we started to get, you know, I appreciate Mr. Drezek's efforts and we're pummeling the tar out of him to get stuff, but from February to now, it's just not enough time to get everything we need. It's not a, it's not a human effort. We need to have a longer time at this, start the budget process earlier, so we could give Mr. Schuman the funds that he, Dr. Schuman, rather, the funds that we need, he needs in order to execute our, to run the school system. That's really it. So six sessions, as long as it takes, keep it open until we're done. I'd rather give the town council a number than have the town council give us a number. That's the way it's always been, doesn't mean it always has to be that way.
I'm looking to do more than just a number. If we're going to talk about a cut, and we've said this throughout the budget process and actually throughout our goal-setting process, when we set our priorities, that we were going to talk transparently to the public about what the impact of any cut we have. And I've said repeatedly, I'm not against cutting, okay? I know, I understand the reality, I don't like it, I don't think any of us like it when we start cutting programs or staff, particularly what we did tonight. But I think we have to talk about, not a number, but what the impact of cutting that is. If that means raising class size, if that means cutting a program, if that means whatever, then that should happen here prior to the town council voting on that budget. The public has a right to know, I think we agree upon this. But, and I'm saying it more for the camera than I am because you guys all know this, okay? But I think we need to get it out there and let the public know this, and let them come and share their point of view.
Go ahead, Mr. Peabody.
That's one of the, Mr. Neville, that's one of the reasons why, one of my disappointments is we haven't done a good job as a Board communicating out to the public, we haven't. We haven't put anything in the, we really haven't done that proactive type communications. Communications become from reporters in the audience, Facebook, which we haven't posted on, but you know, all the stuff. We really need to take it and be aggressive and be proactive. They need to know what we're doing. Everybody needs to know what we're doing and being transparent. And in terms of, it's not just about numbers, it's about what we're doing. So, and the impact of what that, and we've talked about that in our budget workshops before. So I think we're all in violent agreement that we need to do this.
I just want to, every single one of our budget meetings up to this point has been a public meeting. So the idea that we are not, the public is invited to every single special meeting that we have outside of those that go into executive session. Executive session is for their discussion of personnel matters. So the idea that we are not being proactive, I think we have been very open, we've scheduled quite a few meetings that anyone could attend. We talk about this on television every board meeting, we are very open and transparent. If, the idea, I don't want to give the impression, because it's a faulty impression, that we aren't being open. We have been open, as far as, we may have an argument as to proactive, but I personally, I can't, you can lead a horse to water, but you can't make him drink. They don't want to turn Channel 16 on, and they don't want to watch the news stations, and they don't want to turn, you know, read the newspapers, I go to the meetings, I can't help that, we can't help that. You can open the door and wait all day long, but if they, if there's an apathy, and that's what it seems to be, is an apathy, I mean, what else do you want? I mean, I'm, I personally, I don't feel like knocking door to door.
I'll tell you what I want, Mr. Chairman. If we have to go write, put a letter in the JI, put our own op-eds out there, we ought to be doing that. We ought to be sitting there, know the school system does that, you get all the parents writing letters and stuff, but let's go out there and say, hey, this is what we're doing. And we have to go out there and stir the, stir the people up and get them interested. The hows, we'd have to discuss offline and go through, otherwise I'd be here all night talking about the hows. And I agree with you, we are open and we are transparent, that's not what we're saying. We're saying we just need to figure out how to get it out there and put a tube down that horse's mouth and shove water down it, I guess.
You're very colorful tonight, I'm telling you. If I could just make a couple of, we have to be careful about speaking out, we're a Board when we speak as a Board, we're at this board table, we're not a Board when we're out, otherwise we're just giving individual opinions. So if we want to speak as a Board, I think we should do it here. I think the Chairman is correct, we put a lot of opportunities out there for people to come. And I, you know, for years, I've been trying to get people to either read the paper or watch it on TV, and amazingly, a lot of people do, okay? But I think we should be publishing the dates that we're having these meetings, I think we should be publishing the topics that we're going to talk about at those meetings. If we're going to talk about class size at high school level or possible program cuts, then I think we should get emails out that those are the topics to be discussed that night. So if people have an interest in that, they can do that. But I don't think sending out individual op-eds, that's not speaking as a Board, that's speaking as nine individuals.
I'm talking about as a Board, not as individuals.
No, okay, fine.
No, 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 no. It's, we talk as one, we speak as one, and we have our arguments behind the board, behind the doors.
We're so passionate there, I wasn't sure where, you know, which direction you were going there, that's okay, I apologize.
Okay, we need six dates.
We have, we have the alternate Tuesdays, that, we don't have a board meeting, I don't know whether you want to use, or I don't know what else goes on on the Tuesday nights. Thursday nights, we have building committee, and I know that that's, takes up some of our time.
Currently, the Fermi reutilization is on the alternate Tuesdays. So go ahead, pick some more dates.
What about Wednesdays?
Wednesday's work for me, yeah.
What do we have for Wednesdays?
Depends on what Wednesday.
We could start, how about tomorrow, we have a, we have a curriculum meeting, but what about the following Wednesday? Be April, what?
April 2nd.
April 2nd? What's wrong with that? Are you a meeting?
Available any night from 1:00 AM to 6:00 AM.
I am too, Peter. Give me a call.
Speak for yourself.
What about Monday nights?
Why don't we pick one day, have one meeting and see how it goes? Because some of the meetings we've had, I don't know how productive they've really been.
How about we do, let's shoot for, since we're struggling with six, let's shoot for three.
Okay.
And then we can add on as we need to, since we're struggling to find six. So let's narrow it down to three. Mondays are good for Mr. Grady. Anybody else have Mondays that are good?
Monday works for me.
You could actually do the four Mondays in April.
So why don't we, there you go, very good idea. How about we do the four Mondays in April?
The 7th, the 14th, the 21st, and the 28th.
I'm not here the 14th, I'm on a cruise, so have fun.
That's fine.
You will be missed.
What about the 31st?
You guys will not be.
We could do the 31st of March, that's a Monday.
You want to do the 31st of March?
We don't do the 14th, that way she can be involved in it.
So starting March 31st.
Start, I'm all.
Trying to help you out there, state.
And then the first, you said the first two, no, no.
The 7th, then the 21st.
So it'd be the 7th, skip the 14th, go to the 21st.
And then the 28th.
Okay, March 31st, April 7th, April 21st?
And April 28th.
And April 28th. Do I have a consensus from the Board that we schedule these meetings?
Yes.
I didn't hear you.
What time?
Ask the Board, it doesn't matter to me.
Seven o'clock.
Still have to go to work, so.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, okay?
That works for me.
That's fine.
Are we all set?
Great, thank you very much.
Moving on. Board Committee reports, the use of Fermi Advisory Committee. We had our first meeting, we set the, it was actually very, very effective. There's a lot of, if you've reviewed your minutes, you'll see that we, you got the first one.
Minutes haven't gone out yet.
Okay. We will have minutes available, I can give you a brief summary of some of the things that were discussed. We will be walking through the Fermi Building on March 27th at 7:00 PM. The Committee will be taking a lay of the land there. The next one will be the JFK. We are, I think we have a very functioning and open Committee. Some of the reports that I've heard so far is that they have been very impressed with how open and the Committee has been. Some of the naysayers are even pleased with the initial start. We have some enthusiastic members that are really looking forward to participating in this. I think the Executive Committee made a very educated and informed decision on the people that they put on, and I think we're moving forward. So if there are any questions to be asked at this time, I'm opening the floor, any questions? Very good. Finance Committee.
Ms. LeBlanc?
The Finance Committee met on Thursday, it was our first, our first meeting, complete meeting, with now that Mr. Peabody's on board, so I guess we're going to mention that it looks like we finally completed the Simkovitz estate and that the money will be coming, if Chris can confirm, to us, and then we can go on our plan of starting to invest that and, in order to fund the TAG program. So that's a chapter that we're going to thankfully put behind us.
We'll have the resolution for the Board at the next meeting.
Just as a side note, Tina, thank you so much. I know you and I have been working very hard on getting that resolved, and you deserve a lot of credit for that.
I would, I would thank Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Drezek.
Because Chris has probably left so many voicemails and just tried to follow up on top of all the other duties that he has right now, so.
Do we have approval of the?
Some minutes.
Some minutes.
You have a meeting minutes first.
Approval of regular meeting minutes, March 11th, 2014.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Sensing none? Do I have approval minutes by show of hands? Minutes approved. Approval of accounts and payroll, Ms. LeBlanc?
Yes, we have two. The Finance Committee met on March 20th, 2014, to review financial statements for the month of January, year-to-date, and to examine various documents related to finances. Our review concluded that there is nothing significant to report to the Board. Motion, I move we accept the Superintendent's certification as follows. I hereby certify that in the month of January, total expenditures amount to $8,696,561.61, broken down between payroll totaling $3,907,678.83, and other accounts totaling $4,788,882.78. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented.
Second.
All those in favor? Next?
The Finance Committee met on March 20th, 2014, to review financial statements for the month of February, year-to-date, and to examine various documents related to finances. Our review concluded that there is nothing significant to report to the Board. Motion, I move we accept the Superintendent's certification as follows. I hereby certify that in the month of February, total expenditures amount to $6,197,407.79, broken down between payroll totaling $3,936,469.28, and other accounts totaling $2,260,938.51. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Of course, no line item transfers, very good. Thank you, Ms. LeBlanc.
Point of infraction, Mr. Chairman, just to go back to the item on workshops, if you don't want to do this, this is fine, but since we have the first meeting on the 31st, I'd like to have us request from the Superintendent data that we can have ready for that meeting. I'd made a list of things I'd like to get through you from the Superintendent. If you want to wait until afterwards, we can do that, but I just didn't want to let that, I don't want to waste that meeting without having the data we need to talk about.
Mr. Neville, just for brevity's sake, submit the, submit the request through me to Dr. Schuman, and we can get the agenda formulated, and then we'll publicize the agenda.
Sounds great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Correspondents and Communications, Mr. Secretary.
We do, we have a flyer that I passed out to everyone, it's the 48th Annual Arts Festival by the Anfield Women's Club. It's Friday, March 28th from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, and Saturday, March 29th from 12:00 to 3:00 PM at the Anfield High Cafeteria. And it's, again, I said, sponsored by the Anfield Women's Club. I believe it is free of charge, and believe me, I've attended those before, if you have a chance, get out there and see what these wonderful art projects that we have in our school system. That is it.
Any other audiences? No. We have a need to go into executive session, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? We're now in executive session, thank you. We're now in executive session, thank you.